Good evening. Welcome to the November 4th meeting of the Marietta City Council is now called to order. Madam City Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember DeForest.
Here.
Councilmember Stone.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lavell.
Here.
Mayor Warren.
Here.
Let the record reflect, all members are present.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, would you please go over the closed session agenda and public comments?
The City Council will meet in closed session on one item, conference with real property negotiations. The City Council will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 to enable the City Council to consider negotiations and to give direction to its negotiators regarding that certain real property at the intersection of Calmia Street and Jefferson Avenue, APN 906-080041, 906-080042, and 906-080033 with both communities and fidelis advisors. The city's real property negotiators, the city manager, Assistant City Manager, Development Services Director, Economic Development Director, and City Attorney will seek direction from the City Council regarding the price and terms for this property. And as a note, we do not have public comments.
Thank you very much. With that, we're going to recess into closed session, and we will reconvene at 6:00 PM for our regular meeting. Guys, we're ready. Good evening, everyone. The November 4th regular meeting of the Marietta City Council is now called to order. Madam City Attorney, would you please report out for closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council met in closed session on one item, a conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. The council was updated and asked questions, no reportable action.
Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, would you please do roll call?
Councilmember DeForest.
Here.
Councilmember Stone.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lavell.
Here.
Mayor Warren.
Here.
Let the record reflect, all members are present.
Thank you very much. If everyone that can, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember DeForest, and please remain standing for the invocation led by Councilmember Holliday.
Good evening. Please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for today. We thank you that we have the right in this country to vote whichever way we choose. Thankful for our city clerk attending the voting booth outside. We ask that you give us your heart and mind for all the business before the city tonight, and ask that your will be done in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Councilmember Holliday and Councilmember DeForest. Well, I don't know about you guys, but I'm not liking this time change. Tonight, we have three presentations, so we're going to get started right away. And we're going to start with the Marietta Valley Unified School District, their penny drive. I'd like to ask Superintendent Dr. Andres and Mr. Kuhn to please come forward to the podium, and when you're done making your presentation, we're going to come down and take a picture with you. There. I like that. It looks good.
Come join me? Come on. All right. So, we'll show this to you so you can see.
Oh, wow.
So, starting in August, we, and with the help of Lowe's, they gave us two gallon buckets, and we took 11 of them around to each one of our 11 elementary schools. And we asked our little scholars in elementary schools to bring whatever coins they could find in the couch or their mom and dad's purse, or the cup holders.
That explains a lot.
And so, during the course, all the way from August 11th, the start of school, all the way through the end of September, we collected a total of $1,068.47 in a variety of coins. We didn't take the Canadian ones, or the pesos. They didn't work. But we very much appreciate schools first, they let me take all the pennies over there and have them go through the machine at no fee. And so, we present from the children of Marietta Valley Unified School District, our 11 elementary schools, this check to the Marietta Public Library Foundation to support the expansion. This won't necessarily buy a whole lot of, like, it's not going to pay for a whole wall or anything, but it did engage our students in their library. And the best part was unpackaging little Ziploc bags with like 20 cents, or 35 cents, or five nickels. It didn't matter. It was their contribution. So, for this, we're glad to present this to the Library Foundation. So, here we go.
Guys, just go down and take a picture with us.
Great. Okay, where do you want us?
Uh, we're gonna, okay. We're gonna all come inside?
Here, I'll give you clearance. Okay, thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
This means every penny counts, right?
Every penny counts. I thought pennies still been used.
What a good way to start. Oh, yes. And this night is just getting better. Now, we have the honor of having a representative, Mr. Adam Eventoff, with the Southern California Gas Company is here with us tonight. If you could please come forward, he's going to make a presentation for the restaurant grant program.
All right. Well, Honorable Mayor and City Council, it is with great, great pleasure that I am about to present a check to two local restaurants for a bunch of money, I'll say how much in just a second, Jade China and Goi Tai. And just wanted to say that this is part of our restaurant resilience program that started really on the heels of COVID to support our restaurants, mom and pop independent restaurants from throughout the state. We partner with the California Restaurant Foundation, along with our other gas providers, PG&E and SDG&E, and SoCal Gas has been very successful in partnering with our local restaurants. So, it is with great pleasure that I present a check for $5,000 each. We gave so much money away that we only could afford one check for the two of them, unfortunately. Anyway, so, it is with great pride that I present this, and if we could have the representatives from Jade China, and is our Goi?
She's right here.
Oh, too bad. Okay. Well, come on up.
Come on down.
And we'll take a picture if it's okay.
Would you like us to join you?
Would you mind?
No, we'd love to.
We'd be very honored. It's, also wanted to say a special thanks to Scott Agadainin and Heather Estrada, as well as the chamber for getting the word out to the local restaurants to apply for this grant come every March. And so, special thanks for making this happen, really appreciate it, Heather and Scott.
Yes, if it's okay.
Thank you so much.
Our local chambers did a really great job. We hauled more grants in the Inland Empire than any region, any other region in California. So, we did really well. So, thank you to all the chambers in the region for their help.
Thank you so much, Adam. Speaking of Patrick. So, we have a proclamation in honor of upcoming Small Business Saturday. Mr. Ellis, would you come forward, please? And I'm going to read the proclamation first, if you don't mind. You are bringing your sidekick. Okay.
That may.
Yeah, where's your check? All right. This proclamation, the City of Marietta, Small Business Saturday. Whereas the City of Marietta proudly celebrates our local small businesses and the essential contributions they make to our community's economy, character, and quality of life. And whereas small businesses across the United States serve as a driving force in innovation and job creation, strengthening the foundation of our national economy. And whereas the City of Marietta recognizes and values the hard work, dedication, and entrepreneurial spirit of the small business owners who help our community thrive. And, there's a lot of whereas's here. Whereas small businesses are the backbone of our local economy, creating jobs, supporting families, and preserving the unique culture and charm of Marietta. And whereas more than 3,600 small businesses in the City of Marietta employ 25 or fewer people, with many being majority and women-owned enterprises that reflect the diversity and resilience of our community. And whereas consumers are encouraged to support independent retailers and local entrepreneurs on the Saturday after Thanksgiving and throughout the year by shopping small and keeping their dollars in the community. And whereas the City of Marietta, in partnership with the Marietta Wildomar Chamber of Commerce, proudly joins the national movement to empower small businesses to grow, create jobs, and to keep our community vibrant for generations to come. Now, there, let it be known, that on behalf of the City Council of the City of Marietta, we hereby proclaim November 29th, 2025, as Small Business Saturday in the City of Marietta, and urge all residents and their out-of-town guests to support and celebrate the logo businesses that make Marietta a great place to live, work, and thrive, dated this fourth day of November 2025, and is assigned by your entire council. I'll present that to you. Come down, let's take a picture and congratulate you. We'll do the picture first.
Are you wearing airwalks?
Yes.
25 years. Three, two, one. Thank you. Mayor Warren, Mayor Protem Lavell, council, thank you for this opportunity. Small Business Saturday is a very important date for us at the chamber, but really for all of our business community. We will be doing again Shop Small, the campaign this year, starting Saturday after Thanksgiving. And we will run it throughout December. We want to make sure everyone understands the impact that shopping small makes for our community. I always love to share the one statistic that in the state of California, 98% of all jobs come from small businesses.
That's a staggering statistic when you really think about it.
But 98% of all jobs in the state of California come from small business. The more we focus there, the better off we make our communities. And so, the importance of shopping small is so, so, so important, and especially now more than ever. So, thank you for this opportunity, thank you for the support, and we will continue to work and advocate for all of our small businesses.
Thank you so much. Remember, shop local. Well, that was a great way to start our meeting tonight, money and giving out proclamation. Wonderful way to start. We're now going to move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none. May I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda? We have a motion by Mayor Protem Lavell, and a second by Councilmember DeForest. Please vote. I gotta find my clicker. There it is.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you. Now, it's time for our administrative update by our city manager, Mr. Clifton.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. First thing I want to do is say thank you to our clerk's office, some of the other city staff and residents that came out to help facilitate people voting over the last couple of days. If you were at City Hall, you probably noticed a couple of tents out front. We had people waiting to drop off ballots, actually before we even got started, bright and early in the morning. They were out there, you know, in light and dark and everything, trying to facilitate that civic process, which was really impressive to see. I have a few other updates, mostly about some activities and events and recognitions going on over the course of the next few weeks, starting with, each year, the Alzheimer's Foundation of America holds the annual Light the World in Teal Initiative to help raise Alzheimer's awareness and shine a spotlight on this growing international health issue. So, all this week, you will see that City Hall is lit up in teal to show our support. Next, want to remind the community of the 17th Annual Marietta Field of Honor, which will be on display November 8th through the 15th in Town Square Park. Visitors will have the opportunity to recognize their heroes in an awe-inspiring setting with 2,025 American flags. And for those who haven't seen it yet, it really is amazing to see that visual display honoring some of our fallen. In addition, a series of events will be held during that week. For the scheduled events, please visit the Marietta Rotary website for details. You will also see some details on this slide and the website for those that would like to purchase a flag. Sticking with the theme of honoring our veterans, we have the 23rd Annual Marietta Veterans Day Parade on Tuesday, November 11th, starting at 10:00 AM on Washington Avenue and concluding at Town Square Park, featuring the Rotary's Field of Honor. And then, also, still sticking with honoring our veterans, a reminder that we are in the middle of the Marietta Milvet Box Drive for Deployed Troops through November 12th. So, we are in the final stretch. My notes say that this is a friendly competition with Temecula. I'm going to amend that slightly to say it's not so friendly. This means business, and it's for a really great cause. So, we are collecting items for care packages to be sent to our troops overseas. There are collection boxes at a variety of businesses at Marietta City Hall, and there will be collection boxes on site during the Veterans Day Parade. So, lots of opportunities to donate. Again, more information on the slide and the QR code, where you can see a list of desirable items to send to our veterans. And if we stay on track and beat Temecula, the Temecula City Council will be wearing I Love Marietta shirts, picking up trash at a park here in Marietta, which we absolutely want to see. We don't want to see the opposite, which is our council members having to do something like that in Temecula. So, please, for a very good cause for our veterans and for the pride of our city council, let's deliver those items.
Your job's done on the line.
And then, next, want to remind our residents that we do have a temporary closure of the Marietta Public Library that started this week, Monday, November 3rd, and extends through Friday, November 7th. That wasn't something we really wanted to do, but remember that we're getting geared up for the children's library expansion. And to do that, we had to shuffle some things around, put up some new walls, and prepare for the construction. So, we had a temporary closure to facilitate that. Again, curbside pickup will be available November 4th, that's the day through Friday, November 7th, but the facility will otherwise be closed. And then, last but not least, as always, we want to stay connected, so please visit us at murietacad.gov/connect for any additional good news to share with your friends and family. And thank you very much. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you so very much. And the real winners in our contest are our deployed troops. So, that's who we are really doing this for. So, anything you can give is very much appreciated for all of them. At this time, we're going to move on to our Governing Body Commission and Committee Board Report Announcements. Governing Body Report is the opportunity for the City Council to provide a brief report on conferences, seminars, and commission committees, and/or board meeting agendas that they attend. Governing Body Announcements is the opportunity for the City Council to provide miscellaneous reports and announcements. Each report shall not exceed more than five minutes. City Clerk is using a computerized timer. Well, we're to start this off with Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All right. Looking at a lot of things going on, just to backtrack a little bit, since I was not at the last council member, and I thank my rest of my colleagues for representing and holding down the fort while I had a very severe eye issue, which has all worked out well. So, it's nice to be able to see and to be able to read and not have my eye completely dilated. So, this is much nicer this time than last two weeks ago. So, just to move on, I attended the League of California Cities Conference in Long Beach. That was a great event with lots of information being disseminated about all the California cities coming together in collaboration. I attended the State of the City by our illustrious mayor, presented a great State of the City, and did an amazing job, was very, very well attended, and quite a lot of fun. And then, lots of other things have been going on. I've met with a lot of community members about the Hayes Bridge. That seems to be a very hot topic in my third district, and got some information on that today, which I will bring back to my community members. Continue to work on the higher education group. We have now met with Supervisor Washington and actually showed some plans moving forward for the university tower, very exciting. The build-out and the potential there is astronomical for our community to stop the brain drain of our youth going out of the community. So, we are excited to keep our youth home. And we also received our very first check, official check, made to the Foundation Coalition Board, and that was amazing by Rotary. So, we have asked all the Rotaries, that Rotary has asked if we could do a challenge to see how much money we can bring in for the higher education coalition. On last Thursday, I attended the Citizens Academy at City Hall. It was a great group of engaged community members, and I encouraged them that maybe one day they would want to run for council or to be more active in this beautiful city of Marietta. So, lots of things going on, just some various other things, the car show, which was absolutely amazing. If you want to see any of the other events that I attended, you can see those with my online information that I submitted to our amazing city clerk. Thank you so much for doing my governing board announcements. Just like to say that Milvet is doing a great job picking up all of the stuff. I was so excited, my office filled up an entire box. I was so proud, and then the next day, it was all gone. So, they sneak in and they keep those boxes empty, so it looks like we're not getting much, but I hope Marietta is doing well. I haven't got any idea how we're doing it. So, please, everyone, if there's a box, put something in for our troops. And I went out and voted this evening, and it was quite amazing to see a line of cars waiting to vote out there. So, I know our city clerk is out there, making sure that every vote counts. So, hopefully, you guys still have time. It will close at 8:00, so there's still some time to vote. So, I thank you, Madam Mayor, and that concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Councilmember DeForest. Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the Southwest Elected Collaborative, where we're addressing traffic issues here in the region. I have nothing to report at this time. In addition, I attended WRCog on Monday, and nothing to report from WRCog. And I attended the Brokers Luncheon, and Scott's fantastic luncheon. Our homeless outreach gave a fantastic presentation, and every time I hear you speak, and I don't know if, if... There you are. Hello there. Every time you give a presentation, I just want you to know, I learn something every single time. And what you and your team are doing, I brag everywhere up and down the state of California that everybody should emulate what we are doing to outreach and combat homelessness here in Marietta. So, congratulations to you and your team. I attended the Dark in the Park event, and Councilmember Holliday and I have a nickname for Councilmember Lavell. He is our man-child. And it was very apparent that night, he knew every single costume from every single kid. It was so impressive, I didn't know one. But it was a great event. I think it was probably the most attended Dark in the Park event that we've had. And more importantly, I want you to know that the children were so gracious that night. Thank yous from almost every single one of them. They were having a fantastic time in accordance with the weather, so I just want to thank our city staff for putting on such a great Dark in the Park event. I attended the Third District State of the County. Supervisor Washington gave a very detailed of what is happening in the Third District, and there's a lot of growth and a lot of wonderful quality of life programs that are happening throughout the Third District. I attended the Dewali event with Councilmember Lavell and his wife, which actually was his birthday that night. And it was a wonderful evening in celebration of the New Year. And the congregation made us, they always make Councilmember Lavell and I feel like we're part of their family. It was a beautiful, beautiful event, seeing the children, the grandparents, and the entire family support each other. It was really amazing to see how family unity comes together with their culture. And then, last, you're going to see a picture. I was driving to Barron's one evening, and I took Lincoln to Cal Oaks, and I came across this home, and I actually had to stop and tell Russell what a fantastic job in decorating. I did post it on my political Facebook page, and I received over 30,000 views of this picture. So, again, even the subdivision that I live in, it was like over the top in the decorations. And again, having so many wonderful events with regards to our congregations, churches, synagogues, you know, our Dark in the Park, our community coming together to make sure that there's a safe environment for our children. That concludes my governing body announcements, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Stone. Councilmember Holliday?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For my reports, RCA was dark on Monday. They decided they didn't have anything for the agenda, so they canceled the meeting. How rare is that? I did not. They let us know beforehand, fortunately. I have attended a couple Santa stops meetings. That's coming along nicely. We already have several sponsorships for this year's Santa stops, which are starting December 4th, I believe. You'll be seeing Santa visit all the usual spots that you're used to seeing. Along with the mayor, we attended a Town Square Park Amphitheater Ad Hoc Committee meeting today, and we expect to have a report to council on the 16th of December. So, prepare yourselves for that. It'll be a, it'll be a good time, because we got a lot of good ideas that have come out of that group. Staff has done a wonderful job. Other things I've attended, similar things to Councilmember Stone, but the one I want to mention is the Marietta Valley Unified School District Choir Festival. The mayor attended that with me, and it was, anytime, including Student of the Month, Student of the Year, anything the school district puts on is just, gives you hope for the future, because our kids are amazing. And they had choirs from all the high schools and a couple of the middle schools, and it was such an enjoyable time. I'm so thankful that they invited us to that. And not part of my announcements, but I want to give a shout out for the Field of Honor, as City Manager Clifton had mentioned. November 10th, which is a week from yesterday, is the Marine Corps' 250th birthday. And we will, as we do every year, have a celebration, it's going to be at the same time as the Veterans Luncheon that's put on Monday on November 10th. But we do the saber cutting the cake for the Marines, and I encourage all the Marines to come out for that, and we'll have a very special speaker for that afternoon as well. I think it's, the lunch starts at noon. And that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. Mayor Protem Lavell?
Thank you, Mayor. As evidenced, like usual, I'm more, I exist more in the real world than Lori's phone than I do my own. All the pictures you saw of me and her were evident of the most places I was at for the governing body announcements. I have no governing body reports this time, as none of my committees met. Just to touch on a few, I'll be brief and quick, but the Dark in the Park, the man-child, I mean, that took 43 years to develop that skill of almost becoming essentially a latchkey child. So, I, you know, to see the kids put some effort into those costumes, there were some costumes that were way before their time. I remember them when I was a kid, and to see them come back was... I remember them when I was a kid, and to see them come back was awesome. I guess nostalgia is the word for it. A lot of the kids did great. Parents, kudos to you for letting them go all out on that. It makes the event that much better. And next year, I'll give you guys a little hint, I got a movie prop costume from the actual movie.
Or two D2?
Yeah, well, I don't know. It's just, it's real metal and leather, so you'll see. It's going to be pretty cool. It could scare you. Happens often. And lastly, like Councilwoman Stone had mentioned, I got to spend, start the celebration of Dewali with a lot of good friends. It's like being in a room full of Patrick Ellis's. I mean, they're all so nice and just welcoming. I had a great time, and every time I go, it's, it's, it's really nice to be part of something I never had exposure to growing up. Great way to spend the birthday, I was in bed by 8:45, so great night. Anyway, that's all I got for my announcements.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Lavelle. Before I start on mine, I wanted to wish you a very happy birthday. I know it was on Saturday, so happy belated birthday to you, sir. And I also want to thank our students that are in the audience. You come out, we have a group of students all the time, and we appreciate you coming out and learning about government, so thank you for being here tonight. I'll start with my governing body reports. I was at the Southwest Elected Leaders Collaborative as well. I had a T-NOW meeting, and the T-NOW meeting focused on e-bikes. And we had the Sheriff's Department come out, and we were so blessed to have our Police Department come out as well. We kind of looked at who had what ordinances, what they're putting into ordinance, what is the best way to, to keep everybody safe, driving, driving a car and riding an e-bike. So it was a really good hour discussion on the best for everybody's city and what we can do to keep our kids safe and keep our motorists alert and safe when they're around. So Chief, I want to thank you for having the officer there for us. It was really, he did a great job, so I wanted to let you know that. I also attended the regular meeting and executive meeting of the RCA, and there's really nothing to report out. And RCTC, I had a budget implementation committee meeting, and there's also nothing to report out. And Councilmember Holliday did report out on our Town Square Ad Hoc Committee. That takes care of those. I've got to turn this over. Now my governing body announcements. In one day, I went to eight things, and I highlighted three of them. So the first one was, was, first two were on one page. The other two, I made it back from Riverside in time to attend the Safe Family Justice Center's 2025 Annual Meeting, and their report is so positive on what they're doing to help our at-risk kids and people of domestic violence. They're doing an incredible job, and my hat's off to all of them. Also, I went to Lake Elsmore State of the City, and I also had the opportunity to be a part of the Professional Women's Roundtable Leadership Expo, and it was about legacy. And we had Cassidy Wilson talked about being a legacy of Wilson Winery. She did an outstanding job. And this picture here is their family, and that is Bill Wilson's mom, and it was just, it was fabulous. I don't think there was a dry eye in the place by the time she finished her first time publicly speaking, so she was outstanding. I also did Dark in the Park. I was a fairy godmother. And the other picture is me going to the Boys and Girls Club, Southwest Counties, our Kids' Rock Gala. It was a Mardi Gras thing, so I got a little wild with that with a tutu. The very next morning at 7:15 a.m., I attended the Michelle's Place Walk for Hope, and being a cancer survivor and seeing all the survivors out there and the hope that we shared together with, there were family and friends of mine out there that I didn't know were going to be there, and that was really, it was wonderful. It was a great event, and thank, thank goodness for hope, you know? Because without hope, I don't know what we'd have. So it was a great time, even though it was at 7:15 in the morning. My regular Ladies Society Luncheon, the, oh, and Chamber of Commerce Coffee with the City was off the charts. Great job by our Community Services Department, the Department of Fun, they did a great job, Brian, so thank you. Their presentation was well-received, and a lot of questions got answered, and so thank you. Your staff is amazing, like always. That is our last coffee this city for this year. I want to thank all of our departments for coming out and sharing what you do best with our community, so thank you for doing that this year. I also went to the Marietta Hot Springs Food Truck Night, and let me tell you, that was a lot of fun. Had great food, saw a lot of friends, and it was a night for the Dodgers, one of the Dodgers game for the World Series. There were still over 1,000 people there, so it's, it's a rocking place on Tuesday nights. On last Thursday, I had the opportunity to give a certificate out to a young man who was injured severely at a football game, goes to Vista Marietta High School. He still has a broken neck, but he's up, walking, talking, and doing very well. I honored him with a Courage Award, and I honored his hero, the trainer that actually saved his life by not letting anybody take his helmet off, and he's walking today because of that. So that was a very proud moment to be able to do that. And last night, I got to go to Miss April's Dance. This is 35th program. My granddaughter was there, we had a great time, and she is just a blessing to this community, so I wanted to give Miss April's Dance a shout out, because she definitely does put dance in everybody's pants. And that concludes my reports. And now we will move on to public comments. Any persons may address the governing bodies on any subject pertaining to city business for non-agendized items. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the governing bodies on any matters not listed on the agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Madam Mayor, we do not have any public comments.
Thank you. We will move on to the consent calendar. I'd like it to be known that items on the consent calendars are considered routine and may be enacted by one motion and vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless specific items are removed from the consent calendar for separate motions. Madam City Clerk, I understand that there's a request from staff to continue item number four to the next meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. Are there any requests from City Council to pull any consent calendar items for discussion or recuse from voting? Seeing none? Okay. Madam City Clerk, are there any members of the public requesting to speak on a consent calendar item?
Seeing none.
May I then call for a motion and a second? I have a motion by Councilmember Holliday and a second by Mayor Protem Lavelle. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0, with the continuation of item number four to the next meeting.
Thank you very much. Now we're going to move on to our discussion items, and we're going to start off with item number eight, award construction contract for Fire Station One Site Improvements, Project CIP Number 21019, City Project Number 22-452. Staff, welcome. May we, will you please give us your report when you're ready? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, glad to be here again tonight. Jeff Hitch, City Engineer. I'm going to let Garrett Strang do all the talking here this evening. This is a construction contract award for our friends in the fire department. The, the folks that drive the big red boxes around town, I'm sure you've seen them, they're going to be getting some new concrete around Fire Station One, and that's what this contract award is about. So Chief Dave Perez is here at my left for any questions later in the presentation as well. So with that, I'll turn this over to Mr. Strang.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of City Council. So again, my name is Garrett Strang. I'm a civil engineering assistant here with the city of Marietta, and it's my pleasure to give you a brief presentation on the award for the construction contract of Fire Station One Site Improvements, CIP 21019. So start off with the overall purpose of the project. So the purpose of this project is to reconstruct, upgrade, and improve the existing site conditions at Fire Station One. The general scope of work is going to consist of removing the existing site concrete, doing some asphalt concrete paving in the back training area, taking the fire station off of septic and installing onsite sewer lines connecting to a existing site sewer lateral along Juniper Street. We will also be doing some, some new gates and fencing along B Street, installing a automatic gate that will be installed so that they don't have to only access off of Juniper to get to the back of the fire station, and also some landscape improvements along Juniper Street. We will also be relocating an existing natural gas generator onsite along with some other electrical modifications. And finally, in accordance with our Project WQMP, we'll be doing some treatment of onsite stormwater runoff, which will consist of mechanical sun pumps, wet wells, underground detention basins, modular wetland systems, and other things associated with the requirements of the WQMP. So again, this is located at Fire Station One, which is in our downtown region here, nestled between B Street and Juniper Street in the downtown corridor, and you can see on this project vicinity map. So a big concern with this project is going to be how we are able to maintain construction phasing and maintain fire operation to full capacity throughout the course of construction. So obviously, with a big construction project going on that encompasses the entire site, we have to be able to ensure that the fire department still has access to their facilities, and most importantly, they're able to still respond to emergency situations. So in order to ensure that that takes place, you can see from this project phasing exhibit, we're going to require that the contractor constructs this project in two different phases. So you can see in the orange highlighted area, Phase One, at the top of your screen, during, that'll be Phase One of construction, and during that time, the fire engines will be able to access the main engine bay, as you can see at the bottom of the screen, along Juniper Street, and vice versa. When we are doing, constructing Phase Two, the fire engines will be able to access via B Street. So two-phase project, about 90 working days. So overall, the contractor shall maintain continuous unrestricted access to the fire station facilities for operational use by fire personnel, emergency vehicles, and other essential services at all times throughout construction. Now jumping into the bid results, so we opened the, bids were due on September 23rd, 2025. We received a total of 15 bids, which ranged from 2.7 million to 5.7 million. The low bidding contractor was Dayark E&amp;C, Inc., which submitted, who submitted their bid in the amount of $2.7 million, and all bids were found to be consistent with the current market value, and it should be noted that we did receive one bid protest, which was reviewed by city staff, myself, and the city attorney, and deemed to be unsubstantiated. And also, with this request, we have some additional appropriations that we need to request in the amount of $1.8 million. We will be requesting from Measure T unassigned fund balance into 21019, in addition to $35,000 from Measure T Fire Fund Facility Reserve, again into CIP 21019. So with those additional appropriations of approximately $1.8 million, that brings the total project costs to $3.5 million, which will be funded in this project. Breakdown of the funding sources, it'll be about 92% Measure T and about 8% General Fund. And then I gave you a little project cost summary breakdown here, so the hard costs that you can see in those two top-line items, 2.7 million and about $400,000, hard costs are considered like construction activities, so that combined $3.1 million will be the cost for construction plus contingency. And then the bottom of the screen, soft costs, design, engineering, and administration, inspection, the sewer connection fees for tying into Western's facility and sewer lateral, and also construction support brings us to about $300,000 for that total $3.5 million for the overall project cost. And finally, our recommendations for City Council is to amend the capital improvement plan budget for fiscal year '25-'26 to appropriate $1.8 million of Measure T unassigned fund balance into CIP 21019, in addition to amending the CIP budget for fiscal year '25-'26 to appropriate, appropriate $35,000 of Measure T Fire Fund Facility Reserve into CIP 21019, and finally, award the construction contract for the Fire Station One Site Improvements Project to Dayark E&amp;C, Inc. in the amount of 2.7 million, plus a 15% contingency in the amount of $416,000, and authorize the city engineer to execute contract change orders not to exceed 15%. And finally, authorize the mayor to execute the construction contract on behalf of the city. And if you have any questions about my presentation, myself, Mr. Hitch and Chief Perez are available.
Thank you very much. Very good presentation. Could you go back one slide? Go back to the one where the timeline? I was looking for the timeline. I didn't see that one. I saw, oh, there it is. Okay, so 80 working days.
I was hiding that one from you guys.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just didn't see it. Thank you. Okay. I'm going to bring it back to council for questions. Councilmember Holliday, what questions do you have?
I have one. Besides the fact that I need to state that this is so far overdue in getting done, probably about 10 years overdue. So the bid range, 2.7 to 5.4 million, was the 5.4 an outlier?
Yeah, it was an outlier by about $1 million. It will, one thing that we strive for when we bid out these projects is to make sure that we get as much public engagement as we can, and make sure that we actually do be a type of city that these contractors want to bid on and want to work with. So with this project, we did actually receive a good amount of bids, a good amount more than we would typically receive. So the first 10 bids were off by about $100,000 each, pretty simultaneously, so 2.7, 2.8, and so on, up to about 3.5. And then after that, they started to get some, some outliers in the, in the top five.
Because it's unusual to have the low bid and I bid be double.
Yeah, yeah, no kidding. Yeah, that one was definitely an outlier, but yeah, the, the, the top five were right around the same area, about $100,000 off. I believe the two and three were about $30,000 off from each other in that 2.8, 2.9 range.
Excellent. Good job.
Thank you. Councilmember DeForest?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a question about the surrounding community, and will the construction be done during the day, or because of the constraints of, you know, making sure the fire station can remain open?
Yeah, we don't, we anticipate doing all of our construction during the day. We don't really anticipate having any scenarios where we would have to do it at night. Most of, as you can see with that phasing exhibit, we're going to be able to keep everything operational at all times. It's not really residential area per se. We have the school, the school right across the street, we have a daycare facility right there as well, and then some other, some other businesses in the area, so it wouldn't be something that we'd typically do at night.
Okay. Just, just curious, and, and with the school there, the jackhammers and trying to get all that concrete removed?
Yeah. It will definitely be, there will be some noise, noise issues that we'll have to work through, definitely, definitely with the people that work in the fire administration building as well, we'll have to coordinate with them, let them know when we're going to have times where it's going to be pretty, pretty noisy. It's just one of the, one of the things we have to deal with, with, with construction, but, but yeah, it'll all be done during the day.
Can we also make sure that, oh, sorry.
I would just add that, yeah, trying to do this work at night, this is in a residential neighborhood or in close proximity to that, trying to do this work at night would, would really be a challenge for, I think, for the neighbors in the area. Plus, the cost of the project would go up exponentially to keep a concrete plant open for the amount of concrete we're talking about replacement.
Right.
So really, doing daytime work is really kind of the only feasible option, I think, for this project at this time.
And can we make sure that we notify the school and the daycare and, you know, the surrounding community, what's going to be going on? Will we all, will we be doing that?
Absolutely.
Because it's my district, and you're going to call, right? They're going to call me. So, yeah, co-sponsor. No, let's pass.
Well, they did just have all their modifications over at the school, so I'm, I'm sure they're pretty used to the construction activity and whatnot, but yeah, we'll definitely make sure we coordinate with the school district, the daycare facility, and all the other stakeholders in the area.
Well, I appreciate that. This is a long time coming. Thank you so much to staff for making this actually come to fruition, and at, at not a cheap price. I was very surprised it was that expensive, but knowing how much concrete's gone up in the last few years, if we would have done it when I was first elected, it would have been much cheaper. So, but it's nice that it's going to get done. I saw the, when I was in the Citizens Academy, the whole piece of concrete moves, especially when the truck goes over it, that looks very safe, so I'm really glad this is getting done. So thank you so much for all your work on getting this to actually, to start in December. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thinking, seeing no other questions from council before we move forward. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments?
Seeing none.
Thank you. I would like to remind the council not to make a motion in the system until I call for one, please. At this time, is there any discussion to have with council before I ask for a motion? Seeing none? Please, please, I need a motion for, for this in a second. I have a motion by Councilmember DeForest and a second by Councilmember Holliday. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, staff. We're going to move on to item number nine, the first reading of ordinance for adoption of 2025 California Building Standard Code. Welcome, staff. Nice to see you. When you're ready, please, we'd love to have your report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. So we've brought
So we've brought today Andy Crowe, who's our building official, and Mr. Doug Strohsneider, who is our fire marshal. So I'm just going to give you a brief introduction and then hand it over to Andy and Doug. So every three years, the state adopts new building codes, and so the city has to go through a process to adopt those. So our last adoption was in 2022, and it's time for the three-year cycle to begin again. And so with that overview, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Andy.
Thank you. I'm also joined by Fire Marshal Strohsneider. I'm going to touch a little bit on the fire codes during the presentation, but the adoption will be a separate agenda item. So every three years, the California Building Standards Commission updates and adopts new building codes. The current set of codes are to be superseded with the new 2025 California Building Codes, January 1st of 2026. The California Building Standards Commission is also known as, also has the California Building Standards Codes, and that's known as Title 24 of the building codes. The current code ordinance was adopted November 1st of 2022. It's updated every three years, as Mr. Chantrox, who said. State law allows us to make local amendments to the California Building Standards Codes, both the administrative and the building code standards. We can't be less restrictive than what the state adopts. We can be more restrictive. Amendments are always based on local, topographical, geological, climatic, or environmental conditions, and must be approved by the local decision-making authority and then recorded with the Building Standards Commission after they are adopted. These are the codes that we are looking at adopting. So the California Building Code, Residential Code, California Electric Code, California Mechanical Code, California Plumbing Code, California Energy Code, California Historic Building Code, California Existing Building Code, California Green Code. And then codes to be adopted under the fire ordinance will be the 2025 California Wildland Urban Interface Code and the California Fire Code. This is some reference as to what's changing. So the International Code Council Significant Code Change Reference Materials for the California Building Code and California Residential Code identified over 225 significant code changes to just two titles of the California Building Code. There's also major code changes to the California Green Code and California Energy Code that will be taking effect in the new code cycle. In the California Energy Code, electrification is the new baseline for energy standards. While natural gas is still approved and authorized, the baseline for calculations on new buildings is basically for electric being the, the primary source. In the California Green Code, there is a significant increase in functional EV chargers across all new construction types, whether it be residential, commercial, industrial. The, the number of functional EV chargers on a project goes up substantially under the new code. With the new codes, the California Building Code, Chapter 7A, which was for wildfire exposure requirement, was removed, and a new code book, the California Wildland Urban Interface Code, has been created. For reference, Chapter 7A that we used to, under the current code, enforce is 10 total pages in the code book. The new California Wildland Urban Interface is 120-page code book. The adoptions under the California Building Code that we are proposing is reinstatement of a Board of Appeals, which consists of building industry members, construction industry professionals, and representatives. The adoption that we're doing is exactly the same as what we've had in previous, except for the issue that the Citrus Belt chapter of the ICC is no longer in service. So we use the adjacent ICC code chapters for the, the same purpose for members of the appeals board. And with that, our recommendation is to conduct the first reading of the proposed ordinance, adding and amending portions of the Title 15 in the Marietta Municipal Code, adopting the 2025 additions of the California Building Standard Codes, schedule a public hearing for the November 18th, 2025 city council meeting, and accept public testimony. And with that, I am here for questions, or we can move into fire's presentation on the fire code.
Okay, we do have a question from council, so we're going to move with that.
Let me do the fire first.
Well, we've got, you wanted to move into number 10. I wanted to take it number nine and then go to number 10. Okay, we're going to do them separately, so go ahead.
Yep, that's fine.
If you'd like to, Councilmember Holliday, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is just for the building code side, right, that we're talking about at the moment?
Correct.
Have there been any local changes that you're recommending to the building code? Are we accepting the state as is?
Under the building codes, we're accepting the state as is. They've made significant increases that cover all of, cover all or exceed what we have previously adopted.
And, and this action by this council is not discretionary? We have to adopt this?
If you take no action, we get what the state has as the state adopts it on January 1st of 2026.
Same, same result.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't see any further questions by council. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments regarding this item?
Seeing none.
Thank you. At this time, is there any further discussion by council? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a motion and a second. I have a motion by Councilmember Holliday and a second by Mayor Protem Lavell. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, C50, to conduct the first reading and introduce ordinance number 625-25, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Marietta, California, adopting the 2025 Building Standard Code, and scheduling a public hearing to conduct the second reading of ordinance number 625-25 for the November 18th, 2025 city council meeting.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to item number 10 now. Welcome back. Oh, you didn't leave. No, I'm kidding. Would you like to please give this report?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. Tonight, we're here in front of you, just like with the building code that building official Crowe covered, first reading of the fire code in the Wildland Urban Interface Code. Just going to try and make this quick and to the point. It's based on the 2024 International Fire Code and the California state amendments that were made in there. We do have local amendments that are pretty much on the same basis that we had in the current code that we're under. We have a couple of changes. Fortunately, because we had some of those changes, we're able to become, get the designation that we have as one of 30 communities in the whole state of California. So I'm very, very thankful to all of you and everyone that was involved in that, because that allowed us to have that, because of that. This, the new code to become effective at the same time, January 1st of 2026. A summary of the changes, obviously, after the Eaton and Palisades fires, they established a six-year moratorium on local amendments applicable to residential units. We were first told that would only be on houses. The state has expanded that. So all, anything that's in our occupancy apartments, all of that, they are not allowing any of the new code changes. So from a standpoint of, from my perspective, obviously, it would be like telling someone that you can't make improvements on car safety for six years, and that'll keep the price of cars lower. So it doesn't make any sense to me, but I'll stop there. Excludes amendments that are substantially equivalent to those that are filed and effective prior to September 30th of 2025. So anything that we had that was done prior to 2025 will stay that way until 2031 or 2032.
31.
31. So that's what we're going to be with. As far as the California Fire Code, we have amendments to clarify code language, section numbers. As you can imagine, those change as it grows. Verbiage to meet minimum code standard requirements. We've added a few definitions. We're amending the standards for outdoor fireplaces and similar devices. We have people in the community that have asked to use their gas fireplaces closer to their residence, just burning natural gas or LP, propane. And so we've looked at that and feel like that's something we're trying to accommodate. As you guys know, lot sizes continue to get smaller, and so we're trying to make sure that we can work with those people to make sure that they can still enjoy some of those outdoor fireplaces that are only powered by natural gas. We also amending the code regarding the fire department's migration of the enhanced radio communication system to align with the PSEC requirements as we've migrated over. My hat's off to our chiefs for taking that, the, the ability for our firefighters to communicate today is better than I've ever seen in my entire career. The jump that was brought on by them going down that road has made such a drastic difference for the safety of our firefighters, just, it's, it's amazing. And others are following suit. So I applaud the administration for taking that on. We needed to align some of the radio requirements to PSEC, which is through the police department and law enforcement side with Riverside County. So we consulted with them to make sure that what we were doing was going to line with them. We also are amending the fire flow requirements for projects in a higher, very high fire severity zone. We are asking for an additional 500 gallons a minute of water, trying to make sure that our firefighters don't, aren't faced with the same situation we had in LA. I know 500 doesn't sound like a lot, but it, it makes a difference. Addition to the Wildland Urban Interface Code combines aspects of our Chapter 49 of the 2022 California Fire Code and Chapter 7A of the Building Code, designates fire safety regulations for properties located in the high and very high fire severity zones. Previously, we just dealt with the very high. The state passed a law on December 15th and made it to the high also. Severity zones are, excuse me, severity zones are reflected in the maps that were adopted by the council that became effective on July 4th, and those were put out in March by the state. So our recommendation is to conduct the first reading of the ordinance of 626-25, adopting the 2025 California Fire Code based on the 2024 International Fire Code, with certain amendments, additions, and deletions. Also to conduct the first reading of the ordinance 627-25, adopting the 2025 California Wildland Urban Interface Code based on the 2024 International Wildland Urban Interface Code with certain amendments, additions, and deletions, and schedule a public hearing to conduct the second reading of ordinance numbers 626-25 and 627-25 for the November 18th, 2025 city council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. I'll bring it back up to council for questions. Mr. Holliday, do you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, always top-notch. So similar to the building code, we can't be less restrictive, correct?
That's correct.
But in your recommendations, it says deletions.
Pardon me?
In your recommendations, you have listed deletions.
Correct.
Is that deletions they did that we're just accepting?
Well, the deletions are where we wanted to be able to delete areas that, some chapters in the fire code that we don't enforce or don't have, the city, the state hasn't adopted. So we're trying to make sure that we only adopt what we need.
So we're deleting stuff in our fire code that isn't in the state code?
Correct.
Okay. Can you go back two slides? So the additions to the fire code that, that you're recommending, one is amending the standard for outdoor fireplaces, two, can you tell us what the current requirements are and what we're amending?
I believe it's, they want it to be 10 feet from a combustible fence, and we believe that that should be, continue to stay that way for wood burning, stuff that would have flame not controlled, like a gas fireplace. We believe a gas fireplace is controllable. Obviously, as we all know, things can happen, but they're pretty much safe. It's been proven all around. We have residents in the community that want a fire, and they're told, well, you can't have open burning in the city. You can't burn, especially in a high or very high fire severity zone. You're not allowed to burn in those areas. So this is an option for them to have a small gas fireplace within 10 feet of a, of a, of a structure.
Okay. And, and that's for propane or gas only?
Correct. That's only those two items, correct.
And I know previously, the state has had, or the county has had, no, no burn zones or no burn days for wood burning fireplaces. That doesn't apply to gas, correct?
That's correct. Yeah.
And that all still is in effect, right?
Pardon me?
That is all still in effect?
That is still in effect, correct.
The wood burning, they can, they can enact a no burn day and stop, yes. And the fire flow requirements, can we talk a little bit about how that's achieved?
People have options on how to obtain or to get that, that fire flow. People who live in a rural area could use tanks, for an example, if local water is not available, and that's what most people are tending to lean towards. One of the changes is the increase in fire flow went up, I think it was in the last code cycle in 2022, and we've had people on the west side of the community that have built larger homes, and so they exceed the 3,600 square feet with their attached garages and that, and all of a sudden, their fire flow starts to go up. What we've tried to do is try to figure out how to balance that, and we have allowed them to install a, I'll say it's an upgraded fire sprinkler system. It's called a 13R, as in Robert, 13R system. And we've allowed them to then cut their water requirement in half.
For the fire flow?
Fire flow, correct. Yep, their total volume that they need to have. So if they were required to have 60,000 gallons, we'll allow them to bump down to 30,000 gallons and then have the 13R, which is increases that. That helps the interior structure, but it doesn't do anything for wildfire.
That's still 30,000 gallons is a lot. 60,000 gallons, obviously double that.
Right, right. And that's, that's the state fire code. That's not our code. That's the state fire code.
But the 500 gallons a minute for, I mean, that's determined by the water purveyor, correct? For non-rural areas?
Yeah, so when they come in to develop, then where they're told, this is your fire flow that you'll need to have for this area if you're in a higher, very high fire severity zone. So essentially, if they were going to pipe it for 1,250 or 1,500 gallons a minute, or yes, they would jump it to 2,000 GPM in those areas only.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. Councilmember DeForest?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question. The, the outdoor fire places and the, the outdoor burning, that's for new builds, correct? Or somebody who wants to put in like a, a pool and put like a, for example, like a, you know, a, a fire pit next to their pool? That says for new builds or new permits?
No, you can't, you cannot, well, you should not. And lawfully, you're not allowed to have open burning in the very high fire severity zone. Now, if you have a fireplace that's approved by the Division of Building Safety and permitted, they can, you're allowed to burn in that unless you're in a very high fire zone. The intention is, is how do we prevent the sparks, open flames, the spread of fire? We all know that, we've all seen how common sense really isn't maybe so common. And so we have people do a lot of things in our community that cause us to run calls. So that being said, we have to figure out a way that we can modify this or allow some burning. That's where the gas is safer. We don't want to take that completely away from them, but we also have to recognize that not everybody understands how dangerous fire can be if it's not maintained or, or well-tended.
All right. Thank you for that. And the other question I have is, so a lot of residents in the west side where I represent have come to me and said that they are required to put, for example, 10 tanks somewhere on their property, or their, you know, their six giant green tanks that they don't have really room for on some of the smaller pieces of property, or it takes a half acre of water storage.
Yeah, I thi, I think what they don't recognize and understand is the fire department, we can show up with all the firefighters. If we don't have any water, we're not going to put the fire out. It, it's a balance. Where, where do you find that balance? And people have said, hey, you know, I've lived here for 30 years. I didn't have it 30 years ago. You're right, you didn't. But today, just like cars 30 years ago, right? We wore lap belts. That was okay then. Would you think of wearing a lap belt today? Probably not. And our fire department is so committed to our community, and we want to make sure that we go up and put a fire out. We're really not interested in protecting someone's foundation. We want to get in and save their property, save them, do everything we can. And the only thing we, I can really offer our firefighters is to have water when they arrive on site. With no hydrants in those areas, we are very limited.
So some of the residents have also asked, can their pool count as? So some of the residents have also asked, can their pool count as water storage? Is that part of?
We're, we're trying to work on a way to make that happen. I think I would ask you, could you imagine driving a fire truck up next to somebody's pool?
Yes.
And then all of a sudden, because it's not designed to support the weight of that imposed load, now the fire engine's inside the pool? And, yeah, we, we're just trying to avoid those things. And I think that people don't think about that sometimes. Because obviously, we don't have the ability to draft except with our water tender. So again, that takes away some of our, the ability to get water out of a pool. But as you know, for safety, you have fences up around the pool. So how do you get close enough? So we're trying.
Thank you for giving me some of things to say now. I appreciate that. So thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeForest. And, and I'm going to say it out loud like everybody up here is thinking. You are the best fire department in, in, in our nation, in my opinion. And I know you care about everything that you guys do, and we appreciate you very, very much.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, is there any public comments?
Seeing none.
Thank you. Before we move on, are there any further discussion from council? Oh, Mr. Holiday.
Yes, a couple of things. One, I sincerely want to thank our fire department and our chief and, and our Fire Marshal, Strohsneider, for getting us that firewise community standard. It's, it's helped a lot of residents lower their insurance bills. It's certainly appreciated. Yes, it comes with being a little more prepared for fires. Yes, it's a pain, but it's necessary. And, and so I sincerely appreciate it. To Councilmember DeForest's question, if a resident put a pump that attached to their pool system that was able to pump the water out to a fire connector, you'd accept that in a heartbeat, correct?
Well, let's, let's, let's discuss that for a minute, okay? So, so we're going to run down eight years, nine, 10 years, the house is sold, somebody else moves in. Who maintains the pump? Who takes, who's going to make sure that's going to work when we need it? That's why, just like our fire hose.
Who makes sure that the tank has water in it?
Well, I think that people have a responsibility. It's the water for their house. I mean, I don't want to be a tank cop. I can tell you that. I, I, that's not my intent. But our goal is obviously to get water into rural areas where we don't have water. Because without water, we just, our hands are really tied. So.
I get it.
We need the help.
But I personally, from my own personal experience, I've found the code enforcer, the Fire Marshal Department, the entire team to be very cooperative and looking to find ways to accomplish the goal as reasonable as possible. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holiday. Is there any further discussion? I don't see any at this time. I'd like to call for a motion and a second. We have a motion by Councilmember DeForest and a second by Councilmember Holiday. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, C-5-0, to conduct the first reading of ordinance number 626-25, entitled, "An Ornance of the City Council of the City of Marietta, California, Adopting the California Fire Code 2025 Edition Based on the 2024 International Fire Code, Including Local Amendments and Additions." In addition, also, ordinance number 627-25, entitled, "An Ornance of the City Council Adopting the 2025 Wildland Urban Interface Code Based on the 2024 International Wildland Urban Interface Code, Including Local Amendments and Additions, And Scheduling a Public Hearing for the Adoption of Ordinance Number 626 and 627 for the November 18 City Council Meeting."
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Thank you, staff, very much for taking care of that for us. We appreciate it. We're going to move on to notifications. Notice pending approval of final parcel map, PM 38568. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Parcel map 38568 has been continued to a future meeting.
Thank you very much. We're looking at reconsideration. Madam City Clerk?
Any council member who voted on the prevailing side of the original motion may move a reconsideration to consider new information or correct inadvertent errors on a non-public hearing item at the same or next meeting. At this time, are there any requests from the City Council for reconsideration?
I don't see any.
No, seeing none.
Thank you very much. And we're moving on to council members' requests to add or withdraw items for future agenda. Madam City Clerk?
Now is the time for council member requests to add or withdraw items to future agendas. There will be no discussion on the requests. A brief explanation of the request may be given. The merit of the items being requested may not be discussed or debated. Are there any city council requests?
Councilmember Stone?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to agendize a discussion about traffic congestion.
I'll, I'll bite. Okay.
Let's go for a ride.
All right. Any others? Seeing none. At this time, with no further business, we are now adjourned. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
7:14.